I'm going to go ahead and call the town hall meeting to order. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. I certainly want to thank the Boys and Girls Club. Let's give them a big round of applause for their work. I see Rhonda Adams from Ward 4 and Mark Kenyon from Ward 2. I saw Alan Moon from Ward 4. Alan, where are you at? Well, he's here somewhere. And I'm not going to leave anybody out. I want to thank, certainly want to thank the aldermen that are attending tonight. And the first thing we're going to do tonight, I'm going to give just a basic report on some of the things that we've done over the last five months. And then we'll have staff reports and whatever time we have left, you can ask questions or whatever you like. How does that sound? Okay. Over the last four or five months since our last town hall meeting, some of the infrastructure that we have been working on or still continuing to work on is the flyover is now under construction. The other thing is the roundabout is still under construction, almost completed in front of the hospital. Road construction on Highway 16, Highway 265, Garland. So that's some of the ongoing projects that we have right now. Well, somebody, was there another, did I miss a road project somewhere? We will be working on the historic bridges, hopefully this time next year. Sidewalk program. We're going to be taking our sidewalks, we're doing about, Terry will probably talk a little bit about that later, we're doing about 12,000 feet of sidewalks a year, about $500,000. Somewhere along in there.
A little bit more.
So we're going to probably triple sidewalk production in the next three years. We're going to start in the schools and sort of spider with the sidewalks out with the council approval. So we're going to probably advance that from about 12,000 running feet to about 36,000 running feet per year. The trails this year, we're going to do 4.2 miles of trails, the most we've ever done in the city. The Weddington corridor has passed and we're working on that. That will be, that's a very exciting project for this area. The parking deck, we will be under construction hopefully by the end of this year. David?
Yes, sir.
Future projects. Rupel Road from Walmart to Walmart store on MLK to Weddington. Jeremy's at, Chris is at about right? Probably in the next couple of years. The Van Ash connection from the Sam's Club to the new Van Ash in the next couple of years. Regional Park, next year we will be doing streets and water and sewer for the regional park area because of the soccer fields we have to have built by 2017. Some of the accomplishments in the last four or five months that we can be very proud of, the euthanasia rate at the animal shelter is sitting at 4% right now. Calea certification. Chief, are you here? Chief Taber?
I'm here, sir.
Would you talk a little bit about that?
Well, as you said, we received our Calea, which is the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agency's accreditation, a week before last. Something we've been working on for about three years. It's really the gold standard when it comes to accreditation for law enforcement agencies. It just kind of shows that we've got all the proper policies for following all the best practices management-wise. And then we're also reviewing all our high-risk incidents like pursuits, use of force, and those kind of things. So we're very proud to have that behind us. We're the third agency in Northwest Arkansas to receive that. The University of Arkansas has it, Rogers has it, and then we're the sixth agency in the, or seventh, and then the state of Arkansas has it. So very proud to have that. It's been a lot of hard work from everybody, including city council, a lot of you sitting up there. So we're glad to have that behind us.
All right.
Thanks.
Chief, is David here? Please. Some of the things y'all are working on?
Well, we are, we have impaired our training program to the next level, we think. We've got a, we are going to participate in, at the middle of the month, in a two-state exercise with the National Guard and units from Fort Chaffey and Camp Gruber over in Oklahoma and some of the Washington County Urban Search and Rescue Team. It's a three-day exercise where we will be simulating a disaster resulting from the New Bern grid earthquake call. And so the structural collapse and the associated public issues are going to be addressed. And it's a very exciting training for our personnel to get to work hand-in-hand with the military in mitigating large-scale disasters like that. It'll be excellent training for them. We've got a, we have, we are going to train at NASA's Moffett Field Disaster Assistance Response Team facility. We have some personnel going to, they have a new aircraft rescue firefighting facility down in Dallas that we have six personnel that are going to go down there and be certified at their new training simulator. We have, of course, the two boats and trail response vehicles that we're going to be certifying in. And they have rush fire capabilities as well as off-road response and rescue capabilities. So we're very excited about invigorating our training program this year.
Thank you, Chief. We're also working on the recycling drop-off on North Street. We've laid a pad out for that. I've been in contact with the Arkansas Missouri Railroad to do a possible tourist train from probably Van Buren to Crystal Bridges with a, so that's pretty exciting. The Tysons building. We are completing the mayor's vision of the Tysons building. We're taking it to the ground probably in the next, probably in the next two or three months, probably in August sometime. So once that land is cleared, then we're going to have, we're going to have another business go in there. And then we've got seven acres left that we can do as the council wishes somewhat to that, I think would be appropriate. So I certainly want to thank the council's work on that Tysons building, the staff's work on that Tysons building, all the infrastructure projects we've got going. But we're going to take an area of the city that has really been an unsafe building, which has been an eyesore to our city, and it's, we're going to, we're going to remove it. And then we're going to have a, we're going to have a business in there and hopefully we've got another seven acres to do other things with. So that's very, very exciting and very much needed, so. I don't think that I have anything else. That's some of the things that we've been working on the last four or five months. So with that, we'll start with Peter. He probably, he has some stuff he wants to talk about.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I talk about urban agriculture, I just wanted to follow up on what the mayor said about the Weddington corridor plan, which unanimously passed city council on March 19th. And that's of particular interest to this area of town. We'll begin with passage of that plan, we'll now begin work on the implementation steps associated with that plan, which include a speed study along Weddington Drive, work, continuing to work with the Arkansas Transportation Department on a new Interstate 540 Weddington Drive interchange, rezoning for part of the planned corridor to help realize the heart of the neighborhood near Rupel Road and Weddington Drive, amendments to the city's alternative transportation plan, and enduring green network plans to help realize the north-south oriented greenway that connects Bryce Davis Park with the Owl Creek area and the Boys and Girls Club where we're at tonight, some parkland dedication, development of conservation subdivision ordinance, which will allow developers to do clustered development, and then access management plan and access management improvements for the, for the length of Weddington Drive that'll help realize the boulevard cross-section, which will provide some beautification, safety, and congestion mitigation for Weddington, what we're going to be calling in the future Weddington Parkway. So be looking for more on that to come. If you've got any specific questions about the Weddington corridor plan, be glad to answer those at the end of the presentations tonight. Also, there's a very large printout of our illustrative graphic hanging up at the Fayetteville Library right now, right behind where the Arcegas Coffee Shop is located. And you can also go to the city's website to find out more information about the document plan itself or the illustrative master plan. So with that, I'll go into the next project we had after the Weddington corridor plan, which is urban agriculture policy reform. Many folks would be interested to find out why Fayetteville needs urban agriculture policy reform. And it all has to do with hunger. One in six Americans is fighting hunger, and in Fayetteville, that statistic is one in four Fayetteville citizens. Arkansas leads the nation with 19% of its citizens being defined as food insecure, which means they lack consistent access to healthful foods. 15% of Washington County residents are on, are defined as food insecure. And Washington County also has the second highest SNAP usage rate. SNAP is also, is the new acronym for what used to be called food stamps. And then between 2005 and 2009, there was a 318% increase in food bank use in Washington County as well. And these problems appear to be continuing. So in response to some of these concerns, several local organizations, including Feed Fayetteville and the Fayetteville Forward Local Foods Group, conducted some surveys asking citizens for input on how the city could help mitigate some of these food insecurity issues. And many of the responses, as you can see on the screen, are related to access to urban agriculture. And with the mayor's help, we highlighted the four responses that we felt like the city could have the greatest impact on in the near term, most of those having to do with some of our code and policies related to people's ability to practice urban agriculture. So after receiving that survey input, the mayor instructed us to craft a resolution of intent, which we took to city council on March 19th, the same night the Weddington corridor plan passed. And this resolution essentially expresses the city council's, the city council's request that staff begin working on urban agriculture policy reform, looking at our code and evaluating where we may be inadvertently preventing folks' ability to practice urban agriculture, and bringing forth some policy recommendations for how to mitigate some of those obstacles with an overall end goal of improving citizens' access to urban agriculture. This passage of this resolution in no way changed any of Fayetteville's current city code. You know, we don't have any increase in numbers of farm animals allowed in residential areas with passage of this. Again, it's just a resolution of intent, city council requesting staff to begin this work and come back at a later date with what those specific recommendations would be. And at that point, we'll have an opportunity to debate the merit of all of those potential changes. So with passage of that resolution, we've created a stakeholder group to begin evaluating what the city can do to help promote access to urban agriculture. The four main areas that we've decided to focus on or found that are going to be most beneficial to focus on are expanding ability to sell food onsite where grown. So these are like market gardens. In residential areas, we've got large lots, a large garden, you might be able to have a market selling your produce. Review of our animals and fowl ordinance, also known as the chicken ordinance, for potential expansion, using leftover space such as right-of-way and parklands for productive food-bearing plants, and then establishing more community gardens. Next step is we begin to identify some of the specific barriers to urban agriculture within the city of Fayetteville. A couple of those include, right now, our animals and fowl ordinance, also known as the chicken ordinance, states that you can have a maximum of four chickens in single-family residential zones. Those chickens have to either be in your side yard or your backyard, and there's no allowances given for folks who might have a larger lot. So somebody lives on a, you know, 4,000 square foot lot can have the same number of chickens as somebody who lives on a 40,000 square foot lot, all right? Other barriers we've identified, currently code restricts all other farm animals, cannot have farm animals in any residential areas. The only areas you're allowed to have them would be lands that are zoned agriculture or a couple of industrial zonings. On-site sales, again, the market gardens are allowed in, as a conditional use in many of our residential, in many of our more dense residential zones, but some of our residential zones that have the lowest density, that would probably most benefit from having market gardens or onsite sales of produce, are restricted from having them. Trees in the right-of-way, right now, we don't, we don't allow fruit and nut trees inside the city's right-of-way. And then deer, this is an interesting one. Right now, city Fayetteville does not allow hunting of deer inside the city limits. Some cities in Arkansas do allow that as a way of managing deer populations that are, quite frankly, a significant threat to many people's urban gardens because they come in and eat their gardens. So that one is another issue that we've identified. Not to say that we've come back with any recommendations on any of those issues yet, but these are kind of what we've been talking about so far. So we'll be looking to, to help answer some of these questions. We'll be looking to a lot of other progressive communities across the country in terms of what they've been able to do with their urban agriculture reform. There's plenty of literature out there, plenty of scans and best practices available for us to look at. Likely we'll be coming back with something similar to what Cleveland proposed in 2008 and 2009 in terms of recommended changes. One interesting thing I would point out on, if I can hit the screen, on what Cleveland came back with is their recommended changes allowed for usage based on how big your lot size is. And so I think that that bears serious consideration as we go through, through our discussions and this process. We're just beginning through the process, and if you've got questions, be glad to entertain them at the end of tonight's presentations. You can check out our website, and there's my contact information if you'd like to talk to me directly.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, Terry?
Hey, I'm the Transportation Services Director, Terry Gully, and I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview of our sidewalk and overlay program for the year. That's, yeah, there we go. I'm going to go through a few slides here that kind of show what we've done in the past year. This is us up, working, replacing crosswalks on Dixon where we were pulling the brick out. It had become undulated up there and very rough, so we were replacing that, putting mortar underneath it and then setting the brick back in it so that it won't shift again with the sand. This is where we were doing the brick pattern along East Street in front of the new Chancellor Hotel. We did a cost share where they provided the money for all our materials on this job, and then we installed it. This is just the same, same point looking the other direction towards Dixon. But it kind of shows you how the steps we have to go through, and I've got another one here, kind of all the things it does to do the pockets for the trees, that's what the boxes are, and then the brick pattern and all, as we put that in. It's quite a process. This is showing Center Street after we had replaced the south side. We were about to plant the trees and install the lights. It completely transformed that area of downtown. This is looking back up Center from College, showing again how much work there is into getting this to go together. This is over on Lawson Street between Porter and Sang. This was a street that had no curb and gutter, no sidewalk, and we also, the street was in poor condition. We repaired all that last year. This is the new sidewalk along Mission, on the north side of Mission, connecting Vandergriff School on to the east to the, to the city limits. And this was made possible by Dr. Garner and his wife donated, it's about two and a half acres there that they just gave to the city for this, so we could place this back behind the tree line and make it a safer area, plus it's out of the right-of-way for any future expansion. This was Oakland Avenue, north of North Street. We did from Sycamore down to North Street. We solved some drainage issues there we had, as well as getting new sidewalk, and the street was then overlaid. This was another cost share we did with the university from Maple, looking up Razor back there. University kicked in almost $60,000 for all the materials on this, and we built this. This is just looking back the other, other way along their new nursing center. This is just a sample of some sidewalks. It's nowhere near the whole list, but it's just some of the bigger ones we're doing along this year. Armstrong's down in the industrial park area. Dixon Street is east of College up the hill to Fletcher. Huntsville Road is connecting down essentially where MLK ends and Huntsville begins, all the way down to the funeral home on Happy Hollow. Leverett, we're doing a section of that this year from Cleveland to Maple, then we'll go from Cleveland to North Street next year. Woolsey Avenue, north to Prospect in the Wilson Park area, Country Way, we're working on that one right now. We just finished Azelia and we're working on Country Way. Then we're also doing over in this side of town, Hots. We're trying to make a connection from Hots with Cross Avenue and then up the south end of Sang also. And then Salem Road is, those are, these two areas here to connect where the bridges are there, just south of the school and by the softball complex. We're also going for a grant that Peter's working on with us in that, to hopefully get money to put those bridges in wide enough that they'll also accommodate Claver Creek Trail Extension as it goes towards the softball fields. This is just showing a little bit of our overlay process. We've milled this street. This is showing our trucks lined up and our pavers back there, and we're, we're putting the asphalt back on it. This is where we actually paved on Township a year ago. It's just showing the process of all that. We did new sidewalk and then came back and paved that street. Some of the asphalt overlays, the traditional ones, where we'll do in that process I just showed you. These are some of the bigger streets this year, Morningside, Summit, Forest, Greg, that section of Leverett that's getting sidewalk. We're going, one of the big ones that we'll probably be working some at night is Millsap Road out in front of Chili's and all that's starting to deteriorate, and we need to get that fixed. We did some repairs on the more eastern part of Township last year, just west of 265. We'll be milling and overlaying that with asphalt. And then Foster Lane is another street out in Ward 4 that we're going to be taking from gravel. That came in in the annexation and get that. We've been doing one or two of those a year. And Sand Avenue is, I guess, my April Fool's joke, it's Sang. So anyway, Cleveland to Weddington, we're going to be doing that. We'll be taking out that one speed table and putting back a concrete one, like it's everywhere else in town. That was our first try to see if asphalt would work. It did work, but it's not as good. And then the new thing we're doing this year is micro-surfacing. We're going to be doing one section we approved last year but couldn't get done due to cold weather. It's going to be over in the Summer Hill area and then up on Missouri Road between Zion and Joyce. And then, and we clumped that, those were all together for last year. Then this year, we're getting ready to put out for bid here in the next week or so. Another group, which is all in Ward 4, it's going to encompass the area over here, Salem, north of Weddington, that neighborhood up in there. It's going to get the Crystal Springs neighborhood and then several more streets here. There's a list of about 20, 25 streets we'll do with that. And it goes down with a slurry like this. It's only three-eighths of an inch thick, but then it hardens. You have to, we'll keep people off of it for four hours and then you can get back on it. We'll do a lot of, the company that will hire this done, they will notify everybody the day before, they'll notify, knock on doors the day of. We'll ask you to stay out of it for four hours, and then we'll allow you to get back on it and back it up to the previous one. This is what it looks like after. It looks like an asphalt street after it's striped. It's just, what the purpose of this is, we take streets that are not completely needing a mill and overlay and put this on it and hopefully extend the life of that asphalt underneath it for another eight or nine years. And then if we can keep it sealed and it doesn't deteriorate, then we can extend the life, and we can do this about 40% cheaper than we can doing a mill and overlay on every street. So, and that's showing some of the, some of the streets there that I've already talked about. And that'll get around 12 miles, plus we've got about another four miles of, of this micro-surfacing we'll be doing in the western part of town. That's it.
Move over here.
I'm Chris Brown, speaking here and a few other projects and a few other things. Lastly, just hit some of the highway department projects that are going to be happening over the next few years. Very exciting program they have coming up. Just to talk about some of our construction projects, Cato Springs Road, south into town, under construction. It feels like it's been under construction for several years, and I think it has been for more than a year. Weather has been difficult and utilities have taken us a little while to get that done, but it is nearing completion, so mid-2013. Highway 265, that's a highway department project. The city's participated with the highway department, paid about half of the construction costs for that project, and they are nearing completion, probably fall of this year, they'll be finishing that project up. The north section of Highway 265, not a city participation project, but a, but a very nice project nonetheless. They're bidding that project, I believe, this month, and so that project will be starting, construction starting this year. It's about a two-year project, so 2015 for completion. The roundabout, the mayor mentioned, we did the final paving on Saturday. Somehow through the raindrops, they got that all done. They're working, they, they laid out the striping today, probably looking at the weather, it may be a few days before that striping is done, but once the striping is done, it will be a two-lane roundabout, and as I told the mayor, then the fun begins. So you guys come check it out. Highway 16 is another highway department project the city's participating in. It's underway and 2014 construction completion date for that one. Highway 112, Garland, just north of the university, is another project that's under construction, just getting started, and we're looking at a 2014 date for construction on that one as well. The flyover project the mayor mentioned, it is under construction as of January. The contractor's basically been digging holes for the past few months. They have to do that first to put the footing in the ground. The footings, the piers that are going in the ground are eight feet in diameter and about 20 feet deep. So they're basically drilling a 20-foot-deep by eight-foot-wide hole and filling it full of concrete. That's, that's the very start of the bridge. You should start seeing the piers actually start growing out of the ground, probably within the next month to six weeks, you'll start seeing those coming out of the ground. This is what it looks like for those of y'all who haven't seen this. I'll get this thing to work. This is Millsap, and this is Highway 71B, of course, this is the Full Bright Expressway. Olive Garden is right here. So if you're northbound on Highway 71B, just after the Millsap intersection, there'll be a ramp, and this will come up just right beside College Avenue. You'll have a bridge that'll go over all of these roadways, whoops, go over all of these roadways and then back on the Full Bright Expressway. Or if you want to do some shopping or go to one of the restaurants, there will be an access point right here, signalized intersection right here at this point. So really looking forward to this project being completed. It's an 18-month construction contract, so we're looking at mid-2014 for completion of this project. This is just a kind of a 3D view of what that will look like, what some of the piers look like, et cetera. So again, this is College Avenue over here, so there will be about a 10-foot-tall wall that will be built right next to College Avenue. I think a lot of people have, have expressed concern or asked questions about what will happen traffic-wise when we build that, do the work there along College Avenue, and they will most likely have to close a lane, probably for somewhere in the neighborhood of six weeks to two months to do that work, but it's really a pretty short-term closure. There's no question there'll be traffic disruption there, but again, it's a pretty short-term closure for the type of project we're looking at. And this is one of the reasons why we're building the flyover. If y'all haven't seen this before, you probably haven't driven here in Fayetteville. This is Joyce down at this intersection, so the traffic coming off the Full Bright Expressway and this traffic coming down College Avenue. A lot of these people want to go here, a lot of these people want to go here, so it's just a classic weaving situation that is very, very inefficient. A lot of left turns, U-turns that are, folks are trying to get back to the expressway. A lot of left turns, U-turns that are, folks are trying to get back to the expressway and the, the flyover will virtually eliminate those U-turns. Some of our upcoming projects that we're just beginning design on and we'll be looking at construction in 2014 with our third bond issue. The Transportation Bond Program was approved in 2006. It's been set up as two, as three separate bond issues. It's, it's kind of a cash flow and payback system, but the third bond issue will be in 2014. So these projects that we're looking at will generally be 2014 projects. Again, the Historic Bridges Project, we're beginning the design on that and we'll get that done just as quickly as we can. Van Ash, we're nearing completion of the design on that. We're actually getting ready to send out offers for right-of-way, so we wanna be ready just as soon as that third bond issue is, is ready, we'll, we'll be ready to go to construction on that project. And then right here out the back door, Rupel Road Extension. Again, we're starting design on that. We'll be looking at the cross-sections with the Street Committee in some of the upcoming meetings and we'll be moving forward with the design. Again, be ready for that third bond issue, go to construction as soon as the funds are available. Wanted to talk about some of our new projects as well. This, the Street Committee's been working very hard over the past three to four months looking at additional projects that we can add to the bond program. Through a various set of happy circumstances, we, we do have some additional funds available in the bond program, about $15 million. So the projects that have been identified are OY Road, Zion Road. Down here on the very southwest part of the city, this is the access into the regional park, so an allocation to, to get that roadway work done. And then right here in the center part of the town, continuing the improvements to College Avenue that we've done in the downtown area, so continuing that enhancement all the way up to North Street. We also have some matching funds available, or a new federal aid program available, and so we wanted to allocate some matching funds for that 80/20 federal aid program. 2013 projects that will begin through that federal aid program are Rupel Road, the northern section, that's, that's the piece north of the Lindsey Apartment Complex up to Mount Comfort Road. It's kind of a weak link in existing Mount Comfort Road right now, or existing Rupel Road. And then a piece of Razorback Road right here through the university campus, kind of the start of, of getting Razorback Road improvements through campus completed. That project actually, April 4th this week at the cafeteria at Fayetteville High School, the Highway Department's having a public meeting, so if you'd like to come out and see the plans, from 4:00 to 7:00 at the, at the cafeteria. I think that's all of the new projects. And again, as I, as I mentioned, just briefly wanted to tell you about the Highway Department's program. Last year, voters approved a half-cent sales tax for highway improvements and Fayetteville is certainly getting its share of those improvements. There are four projects beginning this year. The first project is from Weddington Road up through the Porter Road interchange, widening that to six lanes, replacing the bridges over Porter Road, actually raising the bridges up about five feet and replacing those bridges, so creating a six-lane section. That's about a $10 million project. The interchanges, both at 540 and 62 and at Weddington Drive, in 2015 are planned to be improved. And then the big project, the 112 71B interchange up by the auto park, that's also a 2015 project. It's estimated at a $55 million cost for that, for that improvement. So in total, about $110 million of work just on Highway 540 in Fayetteville, much larger investment up and down the corridor, but very exciting program. And again, the city doesn't, well, they have a lot of participation in that, but we are certainly watching that and looking forward to those improvements.
Chris, could you go back to that slide where you showed the overall? Go back to where we can see a slide from Garland. Can you do that? Now, for some of the folks that's been around a while and attended Ward Four meetings, we talked about this connection probably about 2005 or '04. Remember that, Charlie? Well, that's beginning to happen now. The, well, the road improvements we're making on Garland, you'll be able to go from the center of town all the way out to Restaurant on the Corner and by, hopefully by 2015 or 2016, you'll be able to take that Van Ash straight through to the other Van Ash. We're doing work on Zion and 265, which connects everything up. So, and then would you have the flyover coming from the south to the north? So there's two different ways you can get into the mall area right there, which I thought shopping is very important to the mayor. So we're gonna build the infrastructure for you to do that. So, and it'll help us get around town better and it's, it's, we're, we're connecting all the dots, so. Lot of infrastructure. We're probably gonna build more infrastructure next two, three years than we built in the last, I don't know, 20 or whenever. Paul, Finance Report.
Thank you, Mayor. For those of you who may not know, my name's Paul Becker. I'm the Chief Financial Officer of the city. And I'm gonna primarily talk about what our financial picture looks like right now, but first I'm gonna digress a little bit. As we remember, we encountered a recession late 2008, saw declining revenue through 2009, 2010. At the mayor's direction, we implemented the mayor's plan, which aggressively reduced expenditures in the general fund to meet that. In 2011 and 2012, we started to come out of that a bit and it looks like now we are continuing to expand our sales tax. So as we, as we proceed in 2013, we were able to recommend and have the council approve a budget that was roughly the size the general fund budget was back in 2009. That was based on a 2% forecasted increase in sales tax based on what we felt inflation may be this year. Well, I'm happy to report at this point in time, the sales taxes continue to expand. As of right now, we've only have two months in, but city sales tax is up about 7.4% compared to last year and county sales tax is up about 5.4% compared to last year. So we're up a little over 3% to the budget and that's, that's good news for us. As we look at HMR taxes, HMR taxes continuing to expand, either not at the rate that we've seen in some of the years of the past, but they're a good solid 3.8% at this point in time. So going forward, that's good for the Parks Development Fund and of course, good for the AMP Commission as we move forward. Utilities and the utility income is pretty stable at this point in time, so that doesn't seem to be too much of a problem. As we said, we're progressing with the parking deck. We've got the funding in place for the deck and we're moving forward there. Mayor mentioned, we have a contract for the sale of the Tyson Building. We were able to go out in a, in an auction process and actually auction some of the materials in Bob Salvage Bull. Within that building, actually had a bid of over $90,000 to tear the building now, so we did very well there and we're very proud of that. As we look forward into 2013, I don't see any pitfalls at this point in time, but we have the general fund in a good reserve position at this point in time. We're in about the $13 million range to meet economic challenges if we have them. As we all know, we look at the sequester in Washington DC. We don't know what that's gonna mean to the economy. We don't know what that's gonna be to funding all around. As you've read in the paper, part of the sequester is gonna hit right here in Homers. We're talking about the tower at the airport. And one challenge, of course, we have been looking at is the airport. As you've all probably read, we did have to take the fuel sales in-house. We think that's good for us, we think that can bring up the traffic and we think we can make a profit at that. So we're excited about that. Like I say, going long-term, there are challenges and we don't know where we're gonna be as far as federal funding is concerned for new brand programs or how the economy will play out long-term. But I think we're in a good position. Right now, we're expanding, we're prepared if we gotta meet an economic challenge and I think we're in a pretty good position. So that's my report at this point in time there.
Good. Don?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Don Marm, the Chief of Staff for Mayor Jordan and the city of Fayetteville. I'm reporting to you tonight for the Town and Gown Committee because Linsley Smith, who is our staff representative, is actually in Little Rock. She is our state liaison for public policy as it relates to Fayetteville and we have quite a few bills going on with annexations and development code and things of that nature, so filling in for her tonight. On the Town and Gown Committee that the mayor and the council formed, we've had several meetings. I guess the latest update is that the committee has divided itself into four working groups. The first group, subgroup A, is called the Master Street Planning and Coordination. Their goals are to maximize capital investment projects and budgets, to develop a process for designing and coordinating one-way streets, street parking, speed limits, change in structure, connections, maintenance, sidewalks, trails that are joint between the city and the university, establishing a boundary by which that will be done. There are also to the Master Street Plan projects, so the roads that we want to be the primary corridors or I guess high-traffic areas of the city or high pedestrian areas of the city as it relates to the university. The members on that committee, the chair of that committee is sitting right here, David Jurgens, according to the last minutes. And the members of, the members of that committee are Gary Smith, he is over Transit and Parking at the university, Mike Johnson, who is with Facilities Management, myself representing the mayor's office, Terry Gully, who's up here on the Transportation Department, and Steve Clark, who's the business representative appointed by the council. Subgroup B is called the Campus Facility Safety and their primary areas of focus are crosswalk installations and improvements, lighting for streets and trails, traffic calming for neighborhoods, emergency services, preparedness, coordination and planning. And also discussion for an additional fire company or fire station, replacement of Station Two at the campus. Chief Day Ringer, who you heard speak earlier, is the chair of that committee. And on that committee is also Danny Pugh, who is our Dean of Students at the University of Arkansas. Excuse me, Alderman Kenyon is the council member representative, who is a ward representative, and Will Hanson is a ward representative. Subgroup C is charged with enhancing communication on off-campus students, neighborhood residents, property owners, landlords, as it relates to city code education, parking, animals, solid waste, proper upkeep and compliance, off-campus student tenant and landlord issues and student incidents such as drinking, parties, altercations among residents, city divisions, UFA officials. The noise ordinance education, enforcement clarification are all topics under that subcommittee. That committee's chair is Barry Herzog, who is one of the ward representatives appointed by the council. And the other members on that committee are Melissa Hardwood-Rom, who's a University of Arkansas representative, Tori Palmer, who is the ASG Student Government President of Students, Yolanda Fields, who's the city's Division Manager, responsible for community services which code compliance falls under, Casey Jones is the city's prosecutor, Barry Herzog and Ryan Miller, who is a ward representative. And the last group is subgroup D, which is the University Overlay District. They're focusing on whether we want to have particular ordinances, restrictions, code changes as it relates to an area around the campus that would focus on the transition from established neighborhoods to the campus. Jeremy Pate, who's here in the audience tonight, Director of Development Services, is the chair of that committee, Richard Hudson from the university and Tommy Dewes, who is the ward representative from Ward Three. The subcommittees are meeting monthly and the entire Town and Gown Committee will meet bimonthly, come back together as a collective group. And right now, the primary discussion is on what is the boundary of our kind of Town and Gown relationship so that we can address within each of these committees those areas of topics. Thank you. And all of these meetings are open to the public, so particularly out, if you, they're published as a part of the city's calendar. We're sending individual notices for the subcommittee groups, so we encourage citizens to participate in that. The university and city relationship is really beyond just the university campus, so some of these committees are talking about things because now with the student growth, we have Town and Gown relationships in our entire city, not just in campus boundaries. So that's the update, Mayor, on Town and Gown Committee.
Okay. Dave?
My name's David Jurgens, I'm the Utilities Director for the city of Fayetteville. I wanna expand on one thing that's been mentioned earlier about the Tyson Building, 'cause Paul, with the enthusiasm of your, your accounting folks. Thank you, sir. Just wanna make sure that, that folks here understand how well the council, the mayor and the staff are representing your interests. In the Tyson Building project, three months ago, we were expecting to pay a contractor $150,000 to remove the Tyson Building. Because of an idea that staff brought forward to the, to the mayor and to the council, we put this out to an online auction and we're actually getting paid $90,000 to remove the Tyson Building. So that good idea from staff created a flip of $250,000 where instead of paying $150,000 out, we're receiving $90,000 and accomplishing the same mission. And it's, it, it takes vision on the part of the council, mayor and staff in order for something like that to take place. We've never done anything quite like that before and it's really, really cool. Now to what I'm here to really talk about. The, on the parking deck, just a very brief update on that project. We are continuing, as the mayor said, we expect to break ground before the end of this year. We have moved forward with the design process. The designs have been submitted to the City of Fayetteville Planning Department for planning approval, just like any other large-scale development would go through, and that process is underway and we have already completed the, this Technical Plaid Committee review, so that progress is, is moving forward. We have selected a construction manager. That selection process was completed just last week and I finished negotiating a contract with that construction manager today. It will be going forward to the city council on April 16th. Baldwin Shell has been selected as the construction manager for that project. Baldwin Shell has a great deal of experience building parking decks in the city of Fayetteville. They built both the Garland Avenue project for the university and the Harmon Avenue project for the university. And in that, following that thought, I would need to recommend, or commend the university and thank them publicly for the great deal of support that they have provided. Myself and several members of our staff went with Gary Smith, who manages all of the parking and transit for the university and his maintenance superintendent, and we visited every single level of every single deck that the University of Arkansas owns and looked at lessons learned on each of those levels. They took a great deal of time to teach us a huge amount that we can apply in lessons learned for the Entertainment District Parking Deck. So we are very appreciative of that effort and the cooperation and education we're getting from them. I guess that's truly higher education when you get to the ninth level of a deck. That really completes my update on the parking deck project.
Okay. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. My name is Matt Mahalovich. I'm the Trails Coordinator for the city of Fayetteville. And just gonna give you a brief overview. As the mayor mentioned, we've got a big year. We're gonna be building the most number of miles of trails that we ever have in Fayetteville, so real excited. I'm just gonna go over a few of these projects, get my pointer out. Starting kind of on the south side of town, a lot of trail work will be going on, including a piece of Town Branch Trail, which is near the university's Research Technology Park. North of Cato Springs, we have a half-mile section of trail there. The Frisco Trail Southern Extension, which will extend Frisco Trail south of MLK and bring it down into Walker Park, so a really great extension there. Also, heading west from that trail is the Sala Ghee Trail, which stands for Cherokee and it's actually part of the Trail of Tears through there, so it's Cherokee and their name is Sala Ghee. And that's actually under construction right now. We have parts under construction. And then also over here, along Porter Road and 540, there's a piece of the Meadow Valley Trail that we're gonna extend underneath the, underneath 540 and we've been waiting a while for a permit from the Highway Department, but we did get that. And so construction should start this month actually on that one. Heading up north- Heading up north, the Clear Creek Trail is under construction, connecting Skull Creek Trail, extending it up through Johnson, north of the mall and meeting up with Lake Fayetteville kind of by locomotion, and I'll give you more detailed maps on all of these in a second. Then also wanted to mention, Lake Fayetteville Trail was just paved about two weeks ago, and that's the southern side which completes the loop, so encourage all of you to go out and look at that. Here's a more detailed picture of that trail. Right here in the green shows the newest part, and that's a one-mile section. This was made possible by a generous donation from the property owner to the south, actually donated four and a half acres. We also were fortunate to receive a grant through the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department for $80,000 through the recreational trails program. And so it's just final touches out there right now. They're dressing it up and putting the grass on the sides, but it is paved and it is open to the public. So I'm going to go on to the next, oh, here's some pictures of that new trail. It's really neat because you go into the woods some, but then because of this property that was donated, it's actually pasture land or field, so you kind of can curve out and in and out of the woods and into the fields. And you can see even under construction, people were using it. Couple more pictures. Okay, so next I wanted to talk a little bit more detail about this section that's going to go under 540. The Meadow Valley Trail was completed in August of 2012. That goes along the university's Agricultural Research Park. That's a two-mile trail and includes the tunnel underneath Garland, but when we got to Porter Road, we were not able to get underneath 540, which is really, the goal is to try to connect up past 540, connect the west side of town, and the bike lanes on Mount Comfort Road. So we're really excited to get started on that. It's a short connection, but it's a really important piece. So you're going to see some work out there. Also a little more detailed on the Clear Creek Trail. That's a 2.63 mile. The blue part is in the city of Fayetteville and the purple, or I'm sorry, the pink is in the city of Johnson, so it's a partnership on that trail. Part of the Razorback Regional Greenway, which is a 36-mile trail that's going to go all the way from south part of Fayetteville all the way up to northern Bentonville. And so we're real excited to have that. That's actually supposed to be finished by the end of the year also. And so we have a few pieces in Fayetteville and Johnson, and these are them. This is funded through that, through that program completely. And also part of the Razorback Regional Greenway is the Frisco Trail Southern Extension, and this is just a real, kind of a challenging piece of the trail system because it's very urban. We have some highways to cross, and so we will be installing a tunnel underneath MLK right near the Farmers Co-op, and then it'll ramp down, come under, and then it follows along this creek, Tanglewood Creek, by the New Grove Apartments, then crosses South School near Tire Tracks, and then on into Walker Park near Ninth Street. So it'll be a really great connection, and then that Sala Ghee Trail that I mentioned will connect on to that as well, connect on. And we plan to start construction in June on that piece of trail. We're very close. Here's a detailed, so where we were just looking is right here, the Frisco Trail Extension. This is that Sala Ghee. A little piece is already built at Hill Place Apartments. It comes underneath the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad, along near Chick-fil-A and the other restaurants. The really great thing about this trail is it's going to connect up a lot of the new student housing. I'm sure you've noticed there's been a lot of student housing being built in that part of town, the Domain, the View and the Grove Apartments. So it will connect a lot of students into the main trail system when they can get to the university also. On the trail also, there's kind of a, it used to be a rail line, and so we have an old train trestle that's actually in pretty good shape, and so we're rebuilding a few, a few pieces of it, we're rotten, and we're replacing those timbers. This was about two weeks ago. Actually lifted it up and replaced those members, and then we'll put a new deck on it, a new concrete deck on that bridge, able to salvage it. And then I mentioned the Town Branch Trail. This is a half-mile piece along the Research Technology Park, south of 15th Street, and that's another one we got a grant on, $270,000 from the Highway Department. That should start construction in June as well. And then finally, I just wanted to kind of let you guys know about the five-year plan we have for trail construction. We plan to keep on going with these important connections, so I know it may be kind of difficult to read, but I'll just go over it quickly. I mentioned the 2013 trails, that, those are shown in the light green. In 2014, we want to build some more of Shiloh Trail, which is west of the Interstate 540, connecting up between Weddington and Porter Road and up to like where Sam's Club is, there's a piece of trail along there, and then, let me see if there's another trail. Oh, also another piece of Town Branch Trail in 2014 to connect over to the Crown Apartments near Baum Stadium. 2015, there's a trail called Neo-Coska Trail along the Neo-Coska Creek that'll connect Gully Park over to Mud Creek Trail and connecting a lot of residents over there. We also plan to do an extension on the Hamstring Creek Trail, and that's not far from here. And 2016, looking at Clabber Creek Trail, extending that. I know a lot of people use that trail and are anxious for it to get a little longer, as well as some pieces of Shiloh Trail, getting it on down to MLK Junior Boulevard. And then in 2017, completing the Clabber Creek Trail. So that's what we have right now is the five-year plan. We'll be staying busy, building more trails. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Connie?
Hi, I'm Connie Edmiston. I'm responsible for you having fun in our city. Our city values very highly the quality of life that we have for you through our almost 4,000 acres of parks that we have, and also through the different programs. And I'm going to go through some of the summer programs. I'm wanting to get spring fever, the grass is growing, and we have a lot of fun things planned for you this, this summer. We've got our outdoor adventure camp that's at Lake Fayetteville. We have three different stations. It's for ages eight to 12. Not only archery will they learn, but they'll learn how to kayak, how to mountain bike ride, how to play disc golf, and then on rainy days, if it does rain, we have a partnership with Lewis and Clark that they can go up and climb on the climbing roll up there. So there's many opportunities there. We have a soccer camp that goes on at Lewis for ages again. Those are five to 12. These camps are all at $60, so we try to keep the price low so we can keep our youth active in the summer. That's why we call them the Be Active Camps. We've got tennis camp at Wilson Park that happens in July. We have a drama camp. We like to kind of go out of the realm for those kids that don't like sports so well but would like to increase their self-confidence and learning how to get up in front of people and speak. And so we have this drama camp at Gully Park in July. We have Camp Wilson at Wilson Park that follows that, and it's just a fun camp. You get to go swimming, play games, you get to do about anything that you want to at Lake Fayetteville, I mean at Wilson Park, but we keep you busy there. And last but not least, we have our outdoor advanced, like, Lake Fayetteville camp, and it's for ages 12 to 15. We're trying to get those kids that want to stay home and play video games, you know, they're not quite old enough to have a job yet, but they need something productive to do, and so far this has went over very well, and we had, in fact, it was almost filled up last year. And then we have our Gully Park Concert Series. Does anybody attend those? They will be coming up. We've got a great lineup, however, they won't let me give you the lineup yet. It's a secret, but you'll be getting it in your water bill in April. But it starts on May the 30th. The shows are from 7:00 to 9:00. You can either bring a picnic lunch, or we have some vendors there that have food there for, provided there for you to eat. Bring your long chair or a blanket, whatever you wish, and you can get out and dance, your dancing shoes on if you want to, so. Wilson Park, it opens up, swimming pool opens up on June the 7th. We have redid the inside of the pool and also the pool decking. It looks awesome, you're going to love it. Kind of bear with us this year. We are in the process of renovating the outside, the bath house and the concession stand, so that will not be completed until next year. But enjoy the inside of the pool, it'll be very nice. We have a bunch of swimming lessons that we offer. We have aerobic classes, anything to keep people active. We also have lanes that we have opened that's for lap swimmers, and they can swim the width of the pool all day long. We have a lane that we have for that. And then we move on to the dive-in movies. We've got four, the Fayetteville Firefighters Association, they fund these every year for us, and they are a hit. It's, it's hard to know. I think last year we had three, over 300 people that attended, but we have a group of parents that are on the Parents Club, and they select the movies that we offer. Any of those, I haven't seen any of them, so I guess I'm going to have to go. The Little Rascals looks good and Little Giants, but we put it on top of our, our pool, and then we provide inner tubes, people can play in the, in the pool and watch it, or we have deck chairs. We have summer kickball league going on in the summer, starting May the 20th. It's $250. This is an adult team, it is coed, and the winner, you can tell this team, this was the toilet bowl winners. They weren't very good, they hadn't won a game, but they did great, so they had a lot of fun, and we pass the toilet bowl from year to year. Whoever wins it one year has to bring it back so we can, can crown another winner, I guess. Then we have adult softball that goes on this summer. We'll also have a fall league, and we also, we have an indoor volleyball league that goes on at the Yvonne Richardson Center during the spring and during the fall. It's going on right now, but there's many places to volunteer. We have a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, that's why I was a little late tonight. It is a great board to help to determine the direction that our Parks and Recreation goes. We have our Urban Forestry Advisory Board. We have a Trail Tracker Program in which we try to get people who are out on our trail system to be out there and help our patrons be safe and to help them out if they don't know how to change a tire, or they might have had a wreck, or might just need some water. We have Adopt a Park or Adopt a Trail Program and youth coaches, or we always are needing volunteers at the Yvonne Richardson Center. And I know Matt's probably going to kick me here because we also have the Fayetteville, the Alternative Transportation Committee also for citizens to serve. In 2012, we had over 12,000 volunteers in our program, and if you put a value to that, it's about $257,000. So our volunteers are extremely important to our program. So I'm glad you all are here tonight. We are on Facebook, we tweet, so if you want to know if a game is on or not on, or what's going on, if you sign up for camp, let us know, we'll help you. Mayor, I guess it comes back to you then. I do have a couple of prizes up here. Anyone who had an April Fool's joke played on them today, please come up here and I'll let you have one of these. I was a victim at the last meeting, but not at this meeting, I hope. Mayor?
Okay. I don't think I'm going to need this with these microphones here, do I? Okay. There's a couple of things I remembered. Jeremy, you want to talk a little bit about the wayfinding signage? I forgot about that.
Through the generosity of the Walton Family Foundation, seven cities within northwest Arkansas region partnered with that foundation to fund a wayfinding signage program. That program is kicking off installation in the next couple of months, and by, I believe July, the first phase of that project will be in place. A wayfinding signage program essentially allows for tourists and residents to find their way around a city, and we coordinated this with all seven cities. So all the cities have some custom portions of the signage, but they're also, also, they're also all coordinated so that as you go up and down the corridor, you see specific places like cultural, recreational facilities, things like that, so Walton Arts Center, Dixon Street area, the town squares. The signage is based off of a project we actually worked several years ago on, and they look very much like the signs that are up in Bentonville, directing into Crystal Bridges and to places like that. So Bentonville is one of the first cities to implement the program, and seven other cities have come on board now, so we're super excited about that program as well.
This is Jeremy Pate, my Director of Development Services, so that's a very big project that we've got going. Okay, this is the time where we'll be opening up for questions from, from you all, so what, when you come up to ask a question, please introduce yourself and we'll do the best we can to answer those questions, okay? What questions do we have this evening?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Kevin Mitchell. I spoke briefly at the last, or one of the city council meetings about the Weddington Corridor Plan. I am glad to hear, Mayor, that you're big on shopping because I'm a store owner over in Weddington. I own Too Cool Frozen Yogurt, and I've been in contact with pretty much all of the business owners or business representatives over in the Weddington area. My main concern, I know there's going to be some disruption along Weddington, but from what I understand, talking with the state representative, there could be a large disruption on the 540-Weddington interchange area and how they're going to rebuild that bridge or modify it or what. It's all in the preliminary stages, I understand that, and I know there hasn't been a public input meeting yet on that, but from dealing with the state in the past, I know that sometimes by the time it gets to that point, they've already drawn things up and made up their mind, and I know they've said that, that the roundabout on, that was proposed by the city really isn't going to work, and so they're drawing their own proposals up now, and I don't know exactly where the city and state stands on who's proposing what, how it's going to proceed, if the city's even proposing anything different or just going to accept what the state ends up proposing. But with 25% of the city, of the population of Fayetteville out on Weddington now and growing, I think this particular interchange is just way too important to just sit back and accept whatever the state proposes. I think the city really needs to be as proactive, and you may be already, I just don't know yet, maybe proactive on how we're looking at that whole interchange. I've been in correspondence with Peter a little bit on, on that interchange and sort of gave a little proposal on, I had proposed a roundabout at one of the, the Weddington Corridor meetings, but what you, what you drew up wasn't really what I was thinking about. I was actually thinking about something more like a large circular bridge all across Weddington, which would be in effect a huge roundabout, but not in the same sense as, as some of the smaller ones that people are kind of for or against really strongly. This would be basically just like a big highway section, and I know this can be done, something like this can be done without shutting Weddington or 540 down at all or affecting traffic at all until just the last few weeks. So I don't really have a question tonight. It's more of, all of the owners over here are extremely concerned, and I'm in contact with them through email, being in person or on the phone, and we're just kind of wanting to, to stay on top of this before it gets to that point where it's too late, and so I just want you all to know that we're all concerned and hoping that we can kind of figure out a different way of doing this that's not going to shut Weddington down or even shut a few lanes down because that's going to be disaster for a lot of the businesses over there. So I just kind of want to try and figure out how this is going to go and who I can get in contact with and kind of stay up to date and so forth.
Okay. Peter, are you the contact person on the corridor? Is it Chris or?
Yes, sir. Chris and I have both talked about, and we've looked at Kevin's proposal, and we've shared it with the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department. Haven't heard an official response back from them yet on what their position is, but we can continue to push for that, and I think, you know, definitely from, from the, from the city's perspective, we're going to be very interested to hear what they've got to say about whatever the alternative we end up with, their plans for managing traffic through that interchange and the, and the construction sequencing, so, yeah, we're having those conversations, Mayor.
Yeah, I think ultimately, obviously, the goal is to move more traffic across the and through the Weddington Interchange, and I'm confident that the ultimate design that we come up with, with the Highway Department, will do that. During construction, obviously, there, there will be some, some disruption to the traffic. The Highway Department, I think in the, in recent years, you The Highway Department, I think in recent years, you saw it on 540, when they widened it to six lanes, they were able to do that with really little traffic disruption. So I think they recognize and understand that maybe better than they have in the past. But it is something definitely we'll be talking to them about, making sure that that interchange, it's one of three access points that we have across 540. So it's obviously very important for folks to be able to get across there. Probably, probably not this month, but possibly in May, the Highway Department will be having a public meeting to look at those plans. We have seen some very, very conceptual plans. They're still in the conceptual design stage. So there's still a lot of things to be discussed, and a lot of details to be worked out. But the public will get a chance to review that, see what they're doing, make comments. And, you know, then it's a matter of really pursuing what we want, and making sure that we protect the businesses, and ultimately get the design that we're looking for. It's just sometimes a matter of perseverance with the Highway Department.
Because at the end of the day, they'll make the final call, because that's a state highway.
I will add, though, that we don't just automatically accept a design at the end of the process. So these public meetings are important for you to attend as a business owner and citizen in this area. I know your council members are very actively engaged in it, and we are trying to meet with them regularly. One of the commitments that the mayor's had is to improve our relationship with the Highway Department. And I think it's our regular interaction with them that is including us earlier in design conversations. So I do think we have an effort to impact design. We don't have the ultimate say on that, however.
No, but we have a good working relationship, well, I would say, with the Highway Department right now. Much better than when we first, when I first took office. Okay, so, roundabout over the I-540, right, Kevin? Is that what you, I understand what you're saying, and then a lot of citizen concern that you're seeing out here.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, we had a public input session back a few months ago, right, Peter? On, Chris, on the...
Yeah, we, Kevin was at our initial Business Owners Meeting that we had, what, it was early October, I think. And I don't recall if you were at a couple of our, at our charrette or not. But we've been discussing this roundabout issue for quite some time.
Okay. What else do we have? Good evening.
Aubrey Shepherd. Thank you, Mayor, for having these. A couple of things to mention, maybe the question for the Trail Guru, shall we call him? And on the tunnel and trestle at the Town Branch, where it leaves just south of MLK, I've been observing that work a bit, and it's wonderful that they're actually using the old trace, trestle, and doing this instead of ripping out more repairing zone for crossing somewhere. The questions are, will the trail end up being level through the tunnel, which the same level as the railroad went, or has that been dug down as far as it will go?
Yeah, we're gonna go down deeper. The current tunnel is not in good shape, as you've probably seen, and there's currently active rail over it, so we didn't feel comfortable going to that point deeper until the railroad's closed down, which will happen when we put the new tunnel, put inside, line a new tunnel inside of that tunnel.
Inside it.
At which time there will not be rail traffic, just as a safety precaution.
Well, I think everybody...
It'll be slightly higher, but almost level with the bridge. There'll be a little increase in elevation as you leave the bridge and go into the tunnel, but not significant.
Very good, because that, the trestle was needing work, and the tunnel obviously needed shoring up. After you remove vegetation for the work, it really showed up how bad it needed help. So that's great news. The other thing, I still, a lot of people in our neighborhood, Town Branch neighborhood, are very concerned about some of the other crossings, and wish you'd been able to use the trestle to get from east to west across the Tanglewood Branch. But then you have a second crossing down further, whether you're going to put in a new bridge, I understand. And it does limit the use of businesses there, particularly Randy Parrish's garage, it's gonna be tightened up just a little bit on that. And it's a big expense. And I still believe that crossing the street somehow, and getting to Walker Park is the safest and easiest. That's, the tunnel's kinda in the works, I understand that. But it would build, that expense alone would build miles more of flat trail. The other point is that you will be going across the repairing zone. Well, actually, you, it goes down between the Tanglewood and the, its intersection or confluence with the Spout Spring Branch. And this is on the edge of Spout Spring from Mount Sequoia. And this, this has the, it will require removing quite a few more trees. I know it's been cleared, just cleaned out a little bit from a brush and stuff, so you can see through there, but that will be another expensive effort. And I wanna make a last-ditch comment, that they could easily use that bridge upstream, a couple hundred yards, and cross at a different spot. And you'd have a shorter path from MLK and the Frisco Trail in there, and the Walker Park. But, and for people crossing to go to those places. What, I guess that's not a question, it's a comment. But the other thing is the variances of, to the streamside ordinance that keep coming up to the Planning Commission. Now, some of the things that have been allowed are very small. But even a one, a one-house, single-family dwelling built inside that overflow area, and there's red dirt where they're gonna put a house down at the end of Fifth Street, and, excuse me, at the spot where the old, there's a walking bridge that's gone across the creek right there for many years. And so the street ends, you walk across, you're at college. People have used that for decades. I don't even know how long it's really an old structure. But now that repairing zone lot is being built upon, red dirt fills, being put in there, the absorbent soil will be removed, and part of it's already covered up with the red dirt for the House Foundation. Now, I remember, it's been, that lot was fully overgrown, as people like to say. I like to say it was grown up in some non-native, and a lot of native plants, including the milkweed they need, the Monarchs need desperately this year. And it's, if it's in short supply as last year, though, it'll hurt them even worse. I think they say there were 2% of the historic high of some 40, 50 years ago, number of Monarchs in Mexico. And they depend on spending the summer seasons in the United States, and Arkansas is one of the great productive states, where we've got prairie and woodland milkweed of various species. And a lot of it right here in the city's being buried by these new construction projects. Top of Rocher Hill, for instance. That's the one where the water ran from the apartments being constructed last Saturday, Friday morning, and poured into the apartments already downstream, through the sewer pipes that hadn't been capped. Some of you guys had to analyze that situation. I know this newspaper quoted you. And that's, what's the fault there? Well, I'd say it's maybe one guy's fault that didn't cover it up. But it's actually more than that. We, again, as we did in 2004, '05, we've got more projects in the works right now than can possibly be inspected regularly. So it might be worthwhile during this boom to somehow get a little of that expected revenue from these new developments, to hire a few more inspectors who can go out and actually notice if this has not been capped. That was probably going on for days, and then, then the rain came, and it flushed it up in the apartments down there. Those people had to be putting motels in those old apartments, on different owners, longtime owners. Their dentist, who's retired now, one of them. And so it was good for the economy, I guess, in that a lot of people had to come out and haul away the belongings of these people, and pay for a room. The contractors probably got stuck with that. But I think four apartments were flooded. And they took out the carpets, they took out the furniture, they took out the belongings. And somebody might have had their lifetime album of photos on the floor that night, so who knows? But anyhow, these are, these are things that happen because we don't have the manpower to watch every detail. Once something's approved, then, you know, the guys that do the approval and so forth are on to another project. And I don't know how many inspectors we actually have that are qualified to do that work, but I have suggested code enforcement help more with that, and I think they've done that more recently on some of those things. So there's just a, my hand's covered up. I've about read all I can read down there, but thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. I have time for about one more question.
I'm Jim Lobler, and I live here in Ward 4. And before I say what I gotta say, I wanted to thank the city for handling the funds and, during this, you know, tough time. So you all seem to listen to us, and listen to your common sense, and it all came together. So thanks for keeping the city healthy enough, so we can take care of things now that, you know, I've got a little extra money. Not the bad part. I'm really concerned about the agricultural move into the city, more specifically, the animal portion of it. I saw up there in Cleveland, one chicken for 800 square feet. Well, I've got a real modest home with a real modest lot, and I believe that's 5,000 square feet. It's a lot of chickens. But I just believe that untamable farm animals just have no place in a city. There's a tradition in this country of, you move into the urban areas to be urban, you move to the country areas, you know, if you wanna have farms, and, you know, and somewhere in between, if you just wanna have yard birds, and, you know, along the freeway. So I'm really concerned about it. My biggest concern is, now we're going into a phase of discovery. But once people start doing a lot of work and putting things on paper, and it all seems, sometimes gets passed, you know, just because it looks like a lot of work and a lot of thought's gone into it. The two Great Danes that live catty corner to my house, they practically climb the fence when I open my garage. If there was a chicken on the other side of that fence, they'd get to them before I do, and I love chicken. So I'm really concerned about this, and I ask that you keep that in mind, you know, as this develops. So remember us people. I used to teach killing chickens and rabbits, you know, in a survival course. And I know their value, but I just don't wanna live with them, so.
Okay. But now, Jim, keep in mind, we're probably, we're gonna take a lot of public input. That was just a resolution of intent. Nothing was passed exactly by the city council, other than we're just gonna do the study and bring something back to the county. Yeah. So there'll be plenty of public comment. Okay, that's about all the time we've got. Charlie, you got one more thing?
I wanna catch you now, because you've got Terry here, right here, too, to talk about sidewalks, and lights, too. When Brawls Road was extended up through Persimmon Place, and on up to Weddington, originally, it was supposed to have streetlights, and never have gotten put in. I know that's a dark corner right there, as you're coming down, waiting to try to turn. If we even list, had a streetlight, but if that little section that belongs, that the city put in, it did not get streetlights. They do have them through Walker's Project. And then the other project was, on the west side over here, is people walking along the sidewalk that's over by the treatment plant. You can only go so far, then you have to get out into Brawls Road to walk the rest of the way, because the city owns the property north of that. The sidewalk was never put in. I don't think it was ever budgeted, I don't know why we missed it when we were looking over things. But there is no sidewalk, so people are walk, are having to walk on Brawls Road. So that was the two things that I've been me to ask. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, before we go tonight, there's some coupons back there. If you have e-waste, old computers, electronics, there's a $5 coupon. You can take them to the Washington County Household Hazardous Waste Facility, 2615 Brink Drive. And you can give them this, and whatever you've got for computers, and it doesn't cost you anything, up to, this is a $5 coupon, so I would suggest that you give them, you gotta fill them out.
The, just to add a few things on them, it's, if you need to dispose of a television, a printer, iPod, or a complete computer set, there's one coupon per item. You can have up to three per household. So if you have things that you need to get rid of, normally, it's a $5 charge to do that. This is a grant that's been done with the City of Fayetteville Solid Waste Division, Boston Mountain Solid Waste District, and the State of Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality. So use this as an opportunity to dispose of them free of charge, rather than having to pay to do so. There will be many of them around. The mayor brought his tonight. Each elected official will have 100 to distribute, as well as the city to be able to distribute it in various formats, in meetings, city council, et cetera. So if you're here tonight, and you have a computer you need to get rid of, take the mayor up on one of his certificates.
Yes, or two of them, or three of them. I have my quota that I have to pass out. Please take one. Okay.
I will say, they are for City of Fayetteville residents, so if you take one and give it to someone in another location to discard of it, they will not be able to use it. So it is for city residents. So just remember that when you take one.
Okay. I wanna introduce somebody else, Sondra Smith, she's our city clerk. I wanna thank the alderman who came tonight. I wanna thank all of you that came. We'll thank the staff for their reports, and Boys and Girls Club, for they giving us this wonderful facility. So thank you all for coming, and until we do another one of these, we'll see you.